Yeah.
Right. Now, I'll call this meeting your order. We will begin with the pledge. Stand. There.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on a ground indivisible, without bounds, just for all.
I'm okay.
I'm good here. I've been having trouble hearing you guys from over here.
Got it. Introduction of commissioners. We will. We will start over here and when we get to Mr. Aaron's, we'll let him talk a little longer so we can learn a little bit about him.
Gene Kapper.
Cindy.
Dave Wallace, I'm the chair.
The other, Senator.
And Chris Ford.
That ends.
Welcome, and thank you for agreeing to serve. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and a little bit about why you had an interest in the Planning Commission?
I am a Dutch immigrant. I served in the Marine Corps in Vietnam. Have a electrical engineering degree from Lawrence Technical University in Southfield. And I've been, I've owned a property in Onekama for about thirty years. Seems like a long time ago. Spent a lot of time in Solberg's Marina on the boat. Came here by fishing. Have a wife Pam, one daughter. Fishing as well brought me to Manistee County. And I love this area. It's beautiful. Lake Michigan is one of the most beautiful spots. Especially Portis Lake where you have a entry to Lake Michigan. We're from Portis Lake, so. It's a, I owned a business for twenty-five years in La Bonia, Michigan. And then later on in Auburn Hills. Had about a maximum employees. I had, was alone twenty employees. The China trade sort of made my job not fun anymore. When everything was sent over to China. I dealt, I did most of my business with the Alamo companies. So I decided to retire early and stay up here. Any questions? Any commissioners have any?
Well, how much do you know about, you know, the master plan, what it does? And then how we reach to zone?
I know when I first moved to Onekama, I had a I got involved in the road ends, you know, first, second, third street. So I I know quite a bit about that. The master plan, I don't know a lot about. But you can, so that can catch up.
Yeah, it is, it is online. So it's just basically an imprint for the future of the township. And then zoning is one way to implement the recommendations that come out of that plan.
That'll catch up.
And the township does have a budget for training. That you could participate in either in person or remotely. The Michigan Association of Planning website is a great resource too. You know, just to catch up. I think there's probably several here that have probably done a master citizen planner program, which is, which is a really good program.
I'd say all five of us, right?
That was last, last fall, wasn't it? Yeah, there are, there are good trainings. M A P, Michigan Township Association, MSU Extension. We have a lot of good resources. And like Chris said, some are in person. Usually they do them in regionally, you know, so you don't have to think about having to travel to Lansing for a week. And and then, and now the online courses have really kind of taken off.
Really helped, you know, because a lot of it, some of the decisions that this commission makes affects people's lives. You know, so it's probably important to, you know, understand the process and then what goes behind making, you know.
On the mountains, why? Why?
All right, I will look into it.
Okay. Approval amendments of the agenda. We basically, in speaking with the clerk, we took off item number one, which was the introduction of prospective members because the township went ahead and appointed the members, so.
Oh, so he's already?
He's, he's sworn in. He's, he's an honorary Musketeer.
I don't know, we just found out.
Yeah, I think I suspect they wanted to not have to wait another month, you know.
True.
And the timing is kind of tricky. So we have we're going to talk a little bit about the master plan and, and the dark sky ordinance proposal. And, and then the additions, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a brief review of ten eighteen.
We'll put that
Guest house.
Put that under new, new business. The guest house rules and regulations. Is there anything else? Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
As amended, support. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Unworded. Yeah, we have the June twenty twenty-five minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve those amendments? Sold.
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
Oh, thank you.
Fuller, thank you.
Excuse me. Public comment? Yeah, public comment?
So Dave Leeson's also going to be joining.
Dave Leeson will, will be the other planning commissioner. He had an obligation tonight. Family first. I always say. My whole family's here and that's why I'm here.
Just reminding you, this is being recorded.
Yes, I know. My daughter isn't allowed to look at YouTube. Is there any other public comment?
No.
We will move on. The Township Master Plan, which was adopted in twenty twenty-three. And I guess that's kind of a quick background for you, Ted. The Township Master Plan, like Chris said, it's a, it's a guide for land use in the future. It's generally a five to seven year plan. We collect a lot of geographical data on the town, on township. Demographics of the population. Housing statistics. Kind of an inventory of what we have to work with. And we look at some of the challenges that we face here in the township. And then we get down to looking to the future and, and what are issues that we feel the township should look to address? And in a relatively timely manner, in the next, say, three to five years or less. And some of the issues that we identified in our master plan were a a multi-use trail for the use of, of the residents to and that's something that is being worked on right now by the Parks and Rec Committee. We talked about affordable housing. Recognizing that as a as a primarily a resort seasonal community, housing is not necessarily within reach for the person that works at the, at the Esmart next door. And we, we dearly you know, love their service and the people at the hardware store who, who help us fix our problems, you know, but they're not necessarily in a position to run out and buy a lakefront home. And even the homes that aren't on the lakefront kind of get pulled along by their proximity to the lake. So what options do we have to kind of promote? You know, we're not in the land development business, but we can perhaps tailor our our ordinances to be attractive to developers. And make it so that their path to, to building is, is not just hurdle after hurdle. And anybody help me with another goal we had in our master plan?
Business downtown.
The business downtown is separate. It's, that's the village.
I printed out, I printed out, well, there's ten tenants of Smart Group Initiative over in here. That talks about high level stock. You know, creating the range, the reason we kind of wanted to bring this up to make sure we were in line with the Michigan legislature passed a law saying that the master plan needs to address affordable, affordable housing? Housing?
Attainable housing?
Attainable, like with a lot of the short-term rentals, the housing is for long-term rental is diminishing, so we wanted to ensure that we were addressing that because that was a change from that in the fall. So that as well is kind of what we wanted to put it on agenda.
And there's other things that the township, you know, we can reduce lot sizes, reduce footage requirements for.
Yeah, I was just reading about the carriage house. We already did do that. That was one of the things on here that we wanted to potentially do. Allow for that. Density.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the action plan now. It's on page sixty-eight. So Ted, I'm also on the Village Planning Commission. And we're also going through a, a master plan update right now for the village. And a draft of it has been submitted. It is on the village's website. If anybody wants to take a look at it, but looking at these tasks compared to what has been put in the draft. The trail system, the Downtown Development Authority, housing, and quality of life in terms of light are all in there. So the township you know, felt that, you know, creating a downtown development authority or, or Business Improvement District or a Quarter Improvement Authority was important, even though it's in the village and not in the township. And the, the D E A has been talked about in the village since the day when I got here. I invited our, our N E D C representative to come and talk to, you know, village representatives probably at least two years ago. And then everything that the state has in their toolbox, you know, that could help, but, you know, not a lot of interest. And I think the only people that were there were just the few of us planning the commission, which is unfortunate. But anyway. There is an interest in the village to do a D E A. It's a matter of, you know, educating them on how it works and how it needs to be created. But is there some sort of a partnership that can be, that can be put together between the village and the township, since the township obviously believes it's important?
Because it's a master plan.
It's a master plan. So I mean, maybe that's, maybe that could be explored. You know. I think it'd be, it'll be hopefully at the August meeting that the village council will then authorize distribution of the plan. Pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, it's got to be out for public comment for sixty-three days, as you probably know. And then it comes back for, for formal adoption. But so that's a little bit down the road. So that might be one, you know.
That'd be a great task collaborator.
Yes.
That, you know, we could work on. And then if you're talking to you know, the village leaders, and you run across them and you start talking about, you know, the village and, and then, you know, maybe kind of talk about, hey, you know, are you guys seriously considering, you know, creating the D E A? And then maybe, I haven't, I haven't looked, but you know, could that D E A extend into the township? And then maybe there's an interlocal agreement? You know, between the two units, you know? Something like that. You know, I'm thinking and it probably wouldn't happen, you know, maybe not right away because you, because once the D E A is created and and then adopted, then you start capturing tax dollars. But what's the long-term plan for the fairgrounds? You know, so I, I know there's, there's some passion behind the fairgrounds, but it's in, in the village or the township's master plan is planned for mixed use. You know, so, you know, just food for thought. But I think, I think this would be a great system. The consultant that's doing the, the village master plan has had months of experience of doing D E As. And they'll do them as kind of like, I can't remember how they termed it. But they'll just do individual tax capture on certain projects, individual projects. And then, you know, use that money just to
Use that one.
Yep. So, and I think that would be a great, a great way to, you know, roll out the welcome mat to, you know, the businesses if that's what the village wants. So, anyway.
Ted, probably in the time you've been here. I mean, you saw what happened with the sewer project.
Yes.
There was, there was, I think, a need for it. There was a lot of work put into it. And then there was a lot of pushback. Not necessarily completely unjustified. Because it was, it was a humongous chunk of money. But as I used to say to people, if the if the health department comes along and puts up signs on, on every piece of property around the lake that says it is unsafe to go into this water and have human contact, what does your property worth?
Many years ago, Mike Axe, and he did the, the fish, I have all the fish I bought, you know, for, for the quality, water quality, for the watershed. For the watershed, yeah. Other regular reports that come out on it every year or how often they check their water quality. There is well, the township has a, has a
It's part of invasive species, we should water quality sometimes.
Yeah.
I know, I see reports when they spray, you know, they'll put a thing, something in my mailbox.
Was it you that got that report last, the last year?
Well, the, the District Ten
Yeah.
Does water sampling on, on the, some of the creeks that flow in.
Shimkey.
Shimkey Creek and, and Easy Street has one. And they, and they're looking, then they publish a, a levels of E. coli. And they look like, I'll say, eight times a summer. And I think it was last year of the year before. There were two creeks that were just off the charts.
It was last year.
It was last year.
Of course.
That's true. I should just add something to the conversation. Because I, I actually communicated with Matt Fournier, Department, District Health, Department of Ten. He was responsible for the testing. And I actually suggested to him some places, like he really ought to be checking here and here, like on Andy's Point next to the hotel. So I think they took some of that into account. But one fact that came out of his reports is they used a technique called quantitative P C R. And they determined that the E. coli was mostly not of human origin.
Right, and that's, but, and, and
Which is good news.
But Matt was down, Matt was down at Easy Street and I stopped to talk to him and got his business card and, and at that time he said, well, we don't, we don't know if it's animal or, or, or human. We, we thought it was coming from Heathrow's Golf Course. But Heathrow's Golf Course is closed up and I don't know if the ducks and the geese still live there. And but everybody said, well, we don't have the, we don't have the facilities to test for, for human E. coli. Well, it seems to me if you get a number like that, you better find out.
They, yeah, they had collaborated with Fair State University, I think, just in that one year. But I mean, that might be something the township would want to be able to make sure we know what we're looking at. So maybe we want to fund that study with Fair State. Those are like, we should have to.
Yeah, I think, and I think last year, Fair of State's machine was broken.
Yeah, okay.
So. Anyway. So we're, I think we're moving on, on action items on the master plan.
Wait, like the, the multi-use trails. I mean, it's pretty far down the path, you know, with the, with the hundred thousand plus grant capitalists, it's a war. Yeah, that's a big deal.
And they're, you're working on more funding as we speak. And, and the there's a program out there from the state of Michigan, tap grants. Transportation alternative programs. And they're really designed for, for communities that want to like put in a bike trail or a jogging path or something like that. And, and from listening to M dot, they're, they're really excited about what we're, we're trying to do and they're ready to help us in any way they can. And you know, I, I hear some pushback about, about well, it's taxpayer dollars. Shouldn't be spending that in taxpayer dollars.
I read, I read an article many years ago, by twenty-five, thirty years ago, where Onekama Township and the village was in the Wall Street Journal. They were trying to combine. And failed. How difficult it was to do something like that. An article in the paper on that. What's the long-term outlook for Onekama? I mean, what, what do people want to do? Do you want to keep the sleepy village or they want to develop it or?
Well, you ask ten people, they'll probably get ten different answers. And that's probably, I think that's probably true, but if you, if you, if you've interested, you know, the village did a survey. And as part of the, the planning update, and we got a pretty good response rate. And then so, you know, a lot of those survey responses, you know, they're all tabulated and they're all, a lot of those have made it into action items. And trail system was, as far as recreational, was the number one requested item, of course. You know, and so you know, some people that are taking the survey don't live outside of the village, but, you know, the consultant was able to kind of narrow it down to a best estimate of responses that came right from the village, people that live in the village. But the other trail system was rated up really high and it's also rated really high in the township. And, you know, based on what people want, it's a fine use of taxpayer dollars. You're not going to get everybody to agree on that, but you certainly have the majority of people agreeing that it would be, you know, money well spent.
And if, if the taxpayer dollars don't go into Onekama, then the new bike trail is going to be in Ada, Michigan. Or in Dexter. And, and that's not going to help the people of Onekama at all. Because M dot has, they have, they have a list of communities that, that, you know, would like to fund projects similar to, to this. We're fortunate that we're towards the top of the list.
So since the trail system is, is a, a use, an amenity that both the village and the township want. And I know early on in the whole discussion about doing this trail is like, oh, no, there's, we're not, there's not going to be local tax dollars going to it. But if it's something that's highly desired, why couldn't it be a request for, you know, half a mil? Or three quarters of a mil? You know, and put it on a ballot. And, and that would be, you know, you know, quite a ways down the road, you know, depending upon how, how successful, you know, township may be in acquiring those grants. I don't, and for the, for the people who live in this area, I mean, would you support, you know, a half a mil, three quarters of a mil, geez, would just, would probably pay for the medical care facility? You know. I personally, I'd support it.
Well, so you've lived here a long time. You've seen the number of people who are walking along M twenty-two for their morning walks. And, and we haven't had any incidents, but it was, it's not something I'd want to do with my grandchildren. Unless I had a leash.
You know, my previous life, I worked for the city of Portus Town by Calum Zoo. We built miles of these trails. And they were widely popular. People loved it. They increased property values. Because people would just get right on, on the trail. You know, Grand Rapids has these trails between Kent Trails and Millennium Trails. And people love it. I want to hear, go up and use Betsy Valley River Trail, because that's the closest one. And so we'd be riding from Frankfort.
Great time this year.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think they're just, they were, they were going to pave another mile out, coming outside of Buella towards Thompsonville.
They did.
Did they, did we do that?
Not very far though.
We started riding towards Thompsonville last year. It'd be probably about five miles down the stone or three, three to five miles. And we had, we had both bikes and it was just kind of.
So Cindy, did you hear anything from the township? Oh. What's happening with the master plan? Items?
The trail, you mean?
Well, or any, any, any of them.
Well, I mean, the trail is the one that's probably the most problem right now. And they know that there is a meeting July twenty-fourth. Matt Kiefer reported last night. He was pretty hopeful about progress being made.
The, um it's not really part of the master plan per se, but the other big element in the room for the planning commission is the Porch Point Inn. It's been a sewer system. Well, we're, it's, it's how can we encourage, facilitate their becoming the viable entity that, that the community wants? They just don't quite know what it's going to take to achieve it. And
Yeah, the sewer is the big stopper.
And a lot of, a lot of Mr. Gazan's plan was based on the municipal sewer system, which isn't. So now he has to look for alternatives. Which was not in his original master plan. Anything else on the master plan?
So do we, we do feel that, that we've adequate, adequately addressed?
So, do we, we do feel that, that we've adequate, adequate, adequately addressed housing?
No, and that would be probably, uh. The next thing, and I don't know if we wanna, we, do we talk to developer, developers and say, you know, what would it take? For, for you to be encouraged to develop in, in the township, uh?
Well, I think first you have to identify property that's available for somebody to develop. Um, I mean, to have, to engage a developer when you don't even have a proposed site is a little difficult to. Even they renew, I mean, something in here is promoting rehabilitation of existing units as well. I mean, there's things in here that.
Well, the township doesn't have that many existing units that are.
Multi-handled.
Ready, waiting for, waiting for uh.
Renovation.
Renovation and, and rehab that aren't being tied by uh another prospective seasonal resident.
Well, Dave and I did a follow-up. To the one meeting we had and trying to identify parcels within the village and that was.
And I think the ones that we, and was just really was the county piece, so with Coral John and Link, and then that probably. Would be the best location because I'm hopeful that if it ever came to fruition, it could connect to the, to the village's sewer system there.
Same, yeah, or they'd have to build their own.
But then it would be, you know, reaching out to the county and. Seeing whether or not they're even participating and how they participate in it. And then really, the go-to person's Tracy Davis. She, she's kind of, kind of the, the expert when it comes to affordable, attainable housing. Yeah, so, yeah, we had some big conversations over that. But yeah, you, developers will, will probably need some sort of financial assistance to fill the gap. You know, somebody wants to, to, to reach out, maybe to Jeff Downs, I don't know who the go-to person might be. You know, if there's any interest in kind of starting that dialogue with them, and Sin, you, you probably have a better idea than I do, given your previous life.
Talk to them.
Yes.
Worked with John before.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, bare ground property wouldn't be the ideal, but.
Oh, okay, um. So, I. I guess the next thing we maybe need to develop a, a plan on is, is the affordable housing goal. And what we can put together, whether it be talking to the county or, or. Seeing what sort of agricultural properties we have on the fringes that might be suitable. Uh. And uh. I know I don't want to get into the development business. So, all right, um, moving on. Yeah, you brought up.
Yeah.
Ten eighteen.
Yeah. Um.
Give, give, give us a little background, so.
When we had our training, um. They, it came up that we aren't necessarily the, the body that, that says who can stay in a home. We are more, you know, setbacks and heights and all that. And I um recalled this ordinance that we uh added about. Guest houses and seven dwellings on the same parcel as the primary. And we have something in here that states that um. Occupancy shall be limited to adult members of the extended family of the owner of the principal dwelling. And I was wondering if we could confirm if that's legal or not, or if that should be deleted about the adult member. The family part, I think, has to do with homestead. You know, it's not a business, it's a dwelling, so you've got your family staying in this unit, but.
Right, they're not renting.
All and or renting, right, yeah.
And I think our intent was that, well, that type of a dwelling is a, is a, um. Something for your parent to move into when they can't be living by themselves downstate. And so, we'll put them in this mother-in-law cottage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. And so.
So I can reach back out to Mary again and see if she has any uh advice to start with or?
It probably won't be questioned because township attorney, whether that, you know, a local, local unit can, can regulate.
I mentioned this to her, she said that it was likely illegal.
Yeah.
At the time, so.
Yeah, hold on.
Well, if, if you let me just comment, because the, the principal residence exemption is something I unfortunately know a lot about. Uh, the fourteen day limitation is not, it's no longer in Michigan law, it's been like overturned multiple times of court appeals cases. So, I'm, you know, an attorney would find those cases. There was one, it was Renshler v. Melrose Township was one of the first cases. That basically put that fourteen day limit, it's just, it's just not in the statute, it's, it's written, I think it was something that the tax tribunal made up on its own. In their administrative rules.
So as far as homestead, you can't, you can't take away someone's homestead.
The key, the key thing in the principal residence exemption, you obviously have to own it, you have to live there. Um, but the, the key thing is intent to return to it, so it's not like you can't be away from, from it. And the period, the court's not addressed, like how long you can live somewhere else as long as you intend to, to return, but. Uh, it's, it's more than fourteen days, I mean, people have been gone for the better part of a year. And the tax accessory will say, well, you're no longer allowed to, and they, people with money.
They're not talking about being gone for fourteen days, they're talking about renting it to non-family members for more than fourteen.
Yeah, and that, that's all, though, people have rented. Much longer than that, or something. I mean, it's, the, because, I mean, the state wants the money. So, the administrative rules were written so the state could, you know, collect that eighteen bills. Uh, but as these cases went to court, you know, the court just said, no, this, this is not in the law. There are limits, and if you don't occupy at least fifty percent of the residence, then I guess it's considered that part of it isn't. P R E eligible, I mean, it gets a little complicated, but.
Mm-hmm.
It's, I think it's, it's something worth reviewing with the attorney to see.
No, that's, that was the second item under being, so, so it sounds like. The language may have come from the thought process of the commission about like an in-law apartment.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why maybe a dog was put in there.
Absolutely was.
So, it's almost like you're trying to prescribe a, a use for it. And I, I think what Mary was trying to say, at least in the classes, is we don't necessarily prescribe uses for it, it's either. Um, an acceptable situation or it's not.
Well, um.
Seems that it's worth sending it to career.
Yeah, and, and I, um, I, I think. I know that downstate only the chair contacted the attorney. Otherwise, you know, we'd have planning commissioners.
Sure.
Calling, and, and when he answers his phone, the meter starts running.
Mm.
Um, so, um, if, if you would like to, um. Put together a, a kind of a, a concise question.
Sure.
Uh, referencing ten eighteen and, and, and where you, we can send that to him and ask him to review it. Um, for his appropriateness.
Yeah, great, I'll do that.
All right.
Again, and just, you know, reading through the, through the ordinance. Um, you know, it has to be, and, and you don't have to answer, it's just kind of some of my thoughts, I mean. One of the thoughts I can't remind is, why aren't these allowed to be attached to principal unit? Um, this minimum square footage is the same square footage as, as the main, the principal house, you know, the principal house, the minimum is really being made, so then. Then the A D U's also has to be eight hundred, a minimum of eight hundred square feet. And typically, A D U's can, yeah, the goal there would be to do something maybe a little smaller. Uh, you know, it could be in the, in the five to six hundred, you know, square foot range, um.
Wouldn't that just be expanding the front row?
Yeah, you could.
I mean, there was a, there was a situation where someone was building, wanted to build a separate dwelling on the property, so I think that's what.
But if I wanted, if I wanted to, if I wanted, on, on my house, if I wanted to attach, um. You know, let's say, let's say my house is, you know, two thousand square feet for simplicity purposes, another six hundred square foot area that had its own. Uh, you know, separate entrance and then, you know, kitchen, bath facilities, living venue, all right there. I, I wouldn't be able to attach it to the house. Especially, especially if you're limiting it, if, if the proposal was just to limit it to family members, um, you know, you, you, you might want to have it.
Why wouldn't you attach it?
You, the ordinance doesn't allow it to be attached.
But, but, but again, the, the law currently does, I mean, the old administrative rules, absolutely what you said. If you got, if the thing has a separate entrance, it's like a, it's not part of your house. But with respect to the principal residence exemption, in multiple cases, I have a guess, that's why I had to look into this. Uh, just because it's detached, it's still part of my principal residence, as long as I occupy it, so, at some point in the year, so.
So you're saying that you would not be able to, to attach a duplex kind of situation? Is what you're saying you would want to do?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to attach it, you wouldn't be able to attach it, the way the ordinance is written here, because it says it has to be separate, and there was a minimum setback distance, I mean.
But is it a second dwelling to attach? But I'm not sure.
Well, no, it would be, yeah, I mean, it, it would be a separate dwelling, but it would be attached, but it would fall under the, whatever the requirements are for, for an A D U. Uh, you know, like, you know, a granny flat, uh, you know, it may or may not have an interior corridor connection between. The principal and the, the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, but, I mean, I mean, as we age, you know, I mean, it just, to me, you know, reading that thought, well. If it's for a family member, you know, I would think I would want it perhaps connected to the main unit. It would be a separate, a separate unit by itself. But, I mean, those were, those were just some, some thoughts that I, that, that, that I had, as I was reading it, it's kind of going, kind of rolling through my mind. But that could be a discussion for another time.
Or it could be part of this question.
Well, yeah, I'd be wondering.
And that would just be in ordinance and evidence.
All right, well, thank you, yeah, um, and. We had a request um from a citizen um to, um. Look into um dark sky uh ordinances, I don't know if you're, the idea is that uh. You know, you're, people come up here because they want to look at the stars, but if you go over by the casino. That front sign, it got so bright that you can't see anything in the sky. Uh, and uh, and so, to require the lighting design be such that uh lights are pointed downward. Um, there's uh some standards that say uh, um, outdoor lighting must be uh thirty-five hundred K rather than five thousand. Um, and uh, it's uh, it's mostly, I guess, for the birds. Not to help protect the birds, not for the birds. Um, and uh, the village of One Nakama has adopted a dark sky ordinance in their um book. And, and we asked Chris if he would share that with us and perhaps we could use that as a template for township. Uh, because we are just, um, you're just crossing the street to be in the township or the village and. Like some consistence, consistency in the ordinances, so. Have you had any? Pushback from, from adopting the ordinance or?
No, because I don't think it's been utilized by anybody yet. But when, when we were, when we were putting together the ordinance language, we, you know, we didn't want it to be so restrictive. I mean, because this, I mean, this isn't a, a Charlotte or a Harbor Springs by any means. So we wanted to keep it somewhat flexible, but not, and, and not overly restrictive. Um, and really, un- until you have a development project.
Right.
Come in on Main Street, you know, you won't, but, I mean, this is all, I think most business owners, I think, do this. Uh, you know, where the sharp cut off anyway, and that's pretty much industry standard. Uh, and they're all sharp cut off, building mounted, um, parking lot mounted, uh, you know, light poles. Um, you know, I, you know, when we were doing this, I walked down Main Street probably about midnight. I don't know, it was before midnight because Easy Mart was still open. And I had an app on my phone, you know, as a light meter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we were, we were reading the foot candles. Uh, and Easy Mart, you know, actually was, believe it or not, if you, if you, if you held a meter, I mean, along the sidewalk. Where we estimated the property line was, and, and they complied with what we put in the, put in the ordinance. Uh, so you have to, when you, when you, when you're measuring the foot candles, I mean. When you look directly at the light, it's gonna look bright, but when you kind of look away and then try and measure the illumination that's coming in, hitting the ground, it's, 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 it's different. Uh, so we thought it was, you know, would be fairly, um, you know, easy for, for developers to do it. Because like I said, it mostly just kind of industry standard these days. Um, but yeah, since we haven't used it, you know, we don't know, um. You know, if there's any, you know, part of the ordinance that would give somebody heartburn. But we thought it was pretty, pretty straightforward, you know, and then, and then communities require uh. A photometric plan, you know, when you draw the, the book handle contours, this show where the, how the illumination is probably going to. Uh, you know, comply with the requirements and, and we decided that, um. That a, a parking lot that could be greater than, than twenty Wall Street spaces would have to provide a photometric plan, and that's how we came up with the seventy-five hundred square feet. Because then we, we estimated, you know, the number of parking spaces and maneuvering lane, kind of came up with, with, with that would be for a twenty-car parking lot. Um. I think so, so that would, the small requirements, I mean, they're, they're not, you know, overly restrictive, anytime anybody buys light fixtures, they always come with a specification sheet. You know, to show what the, what the, uh, the illumination is going to be. Uh, we put in some requirements for, uh, you know, adjacent to residential areas. Um, now, let's see, we put in there. You can, so the maximum height of a parking lot fixtures is twelve feet, except they can go up to twenty feet when they're no closer than a hundred feet to a residential, this is. Um, you know, there's some, you know, turn off, turn on, you know, basically eleven o'clock, except for, um, you know, security purposes. And then the, and then we put, we went over a number of exceptions. But, um, you know, like, sports and field courts. Uh, that are no, no use at ten o'clock, you know, swimming pools, you know, holiday decorations, you know, windows. Uh, that are no, no use than ten o'clock, you know, swimming pools, you know, holiday decorations, you know, window displays that. Are without glare, shielded pedestrian walkway lighting. We exempted single-family and two-family residential lighting. Obviously, public street lights. Uh, you know, then there's a lot of carriage lights around, you know, where the, the, the Dollar House. You know, they have carriage lights out. Yeah, you know, so, so they, they were below a certain line, we, we, we exempted them. Uh, but that doesn't mean that if you have a major problem with glare. Because, you know, I remember dealing with. Two residential homeowners, same-family residential homeowners that were at war with each other. And one just would just take his, his, his two things floodlight and turn it right here at their house. You know, so that the zoning industry would still be able to take enforcement action on that if, you know, we ran across something like that, but. And I did make the changes, um, about. Uh, you know, you had struck gas stations, it's just canopy structure, canopy structure is, is defined in, in the definitions. On mine. So, like I said, I mean, we thought it was pretty straightforward. And I don't know, it really isn't much commercial property in a township, just kind of like a long over here on.
Their residential's exempt, right? It's really impartial.
Yeah. I mean, that's where you're gonna get the heavy hitters is commercial, commercial lighting.
Does, does the fairgrounds fall under our zoning? There's a question, Bert.
I would say, I would say yes.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't I?
If it was, if it was owned and operated by the township, township could exempt themselves. But since it's. I mean, yeah, I don't see why they wouldn't be. I mean, churches aren't exempt from zone.
The schools are, right?
No, schools are.
No, they're not.
Oh, yes, they are.
I beg to differ.
I beg to differ.
I beg to differ because I, I went, I went to the mat on that one. Downstate. Now, uh, schools are, um, in their design are under the auspices of the fire marshal. Who defines the ingress and egress of the building and the, and the facility. But we had a, we had a brand new school in our community that was next to a subdivision. And the subdivision had a vacant lot. Within, within it, it just hadn't sold. The school said, hey, we could buy that lot, we could put a driveway in there, then our buses could circulate.
Well, from that perspective, I, I would agree with you because the local units control access to public streets. But I mean, in, in my tenure, we built two brand-new high schools. Um, elementary schools. And it was always told to us that the state superintendent has sole jurisdiction over the construction of. Public schools. Uh, but there were some things, like you mentioned, that we could control. One, it was our water and our sanitary sewer system, I, our roads. Uh, so yeah, then they ended up flying with that and, uh. But when it came, when it came to zoning, you know, they wanted to work with us. And, and we worked with them and disease were, you know, a hundred, one mill, which I think was a hundred and nineteen million.
Our township trustees were just cowering and feared because they knew this goal was the most powerful entity in the, in the township.
Now, that was Delphi, right?
Delphi.
Delphi, okay, yeah.
And I just went to the township attorney and got an opinion.
Yeah.
Soon after that, I was out with the planning commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
I dare, I dare to question. The all-powerful Oz.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I, no, I, I, I hear you because we had similar conversations. Because there's, there's, there's certain things that, that we were concerned about, on where they were gonna position these buildings on site. And one of them was they wanted to put the back of the, the back of the high school facing a major public street. We, we didn't want that, you know, I mean, because, you know, we, so we, we worked with them to. You know, they, they didn't cave entirely, but we worked with them to dress it up.
Yeah.
You know, so, but anyway.
So, um. How does the commission feel about. Setting this to a public hearing and, uh, getting. Public to comment on it if they wish to and, um. Seeing if we can, uh, add it to our book of ordinances.
Yeah, I think it will be good to see if there's support. Mary Riley had sent four items and one of them was, is there proud support? Um, one, the other was, is there a capacity for enforcement of the ordinance? And then it's, it's a zoning amendment, right? So everything would be non-performing, would be grandfathered.
And are there, now you said you had a request to develop the ordinance. I mean, is there, is there a problem? Or problem areas out there that you, there's concern about?
No.
That maybe we, we need to kind of tweak this to address?
No, it was, uh, uh, it was a concern, uh. From just an individual who is concerned about dark skies.
Okay.
And would like to see it be a statewide ordinance.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's always good to be proactive because then we could have, you know, you know, our, our use come in here that.
I mean, if I look at the township. The first chance I see for us to have to worry about enforcing this ordinance would be Shays. And that's not gonna happen real quick.
No. Probably, well, the brightest spot on the lake is gonna be the end.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, well, well, in the fairgrounds when they, when they do the demolition derby. Yeah.
Okay, so, um. Uh, I think we would wanna probably send this to Tom. And have him look at it and just see if we'd like to set this to public hearing. Do you have any issues with that? And, and, um, get word back from him and then set it to public hearing and. Go forward.
That's your attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Greer.
Okay.
Right. Um. Yeah.
I'm gonna provide a, your revised.
I did.
You did?
Yeah. Well, I think I copied everyone. Yeah. I mean, I can send, I can send it to you, yeah.
No, I'll check.
Good.
There's a while back, so.
No, it was last week. Actually, yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was last week Thursday, because I sent it after the, after last Thursday's meeting. Then.
All right.
That is wrong.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is there a purpose when this one person asks for something like that? Or? Well, um. Any resident has the, has the right, uh, to come, uh, or. Any of the township boards and commissions, uh, to say, I'm, I, I have a great concern about this. Uh, and would you be willing to do something about it? Uh, you know, some things, uh, the township can't address. Uh, for, because it's not within their, uh, realm of, uh, scope of authority. Sometimes it's. Things that they know aren't within their budget, uh, to, to address. But, but is there a, if it's only one person, do we address everything? That one person that sent it to an attorney, do we do it?
Ted, we might not agree with something that somebody asks.
Still.
But it isn't our master plan to develop, I believe, dark sky lighting, so this is, and you actually brought it to us. I hadn't heard that there was.
Yeah, but to adjust what Ted's saying, I mean, if, if, if resident brings up an issue. We will go ahead and discuss it. It doesn't mean that it's gonna go anywhere. We may say. You know, we don't agree with it, we're not gonna change an ordinance, we're not going to do whatever, but try to be responsive to residents. Um, so I guess the only thing I'm saying, because it sounded like your question was kind of close, like you think we're doing it. Just because this resident brought it up. And it wasn't that.
No, it's more.
The catalyst.
It's more or less of a question if one resident asks for to fix a particular problem, do we send it to an attorney?
No, we would, we would discuss it first.
That's, well, we have a, if we have a, a draft of an ordinance that we would like to bring to the public. We're going to ask the attorney first. Um, is this an ordinance that you feel you can, is defensible? Uh, or, or are we stepping into a hole? Um, by, by adopting, asking the, the township board to adopt this. And, and, uh, and he says, I, you know, I have. I have no way to, to defend this in court. There, there's, there's this, and then we have to go back to the drawing board. And say, okay, is it better now? And if he just keeps saying no, then probably we're gonna say, well, we don't seem, we don't know how to draft an ordinance that'll work. Uh, but. This is, I think, a. This is not a major change, but it's still, oh, we have to go through the process.
And we currently do not have a lighting.
Yeah, we make reference in our, in our, um, zoning ordinance to, uh, lighting shall be, shall not be. Uh, disturbing to neighbors or, or, or streets or something like that, but it's very vague. Yeah, as an example, I'll light my American flag at night, I'll light it up.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes my neighbor asks me to turn it off when I have a party next to him. Here's an example.
I don't think we touched that one.
So, you know.
We're not gonna regulate, but you might, but you might have to. I mean, if it, if it's, if it's in the zoning ordinance and now the neighbor, I'm not saying your neighbor, but hypothetically, a neighbor complains, that's a violation. Now you've got to enforce, so you want an exemption for like some. You know, patriotic, I don't know, I'm just.
Can I, can I ask us to process? Cause I don't, I don't. So the purpose of the public hearing would be to get input and then you would make a decision? Is it, is the public hearing necessary for a zoning amendment? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so with that hearing you're talking about would be that necessary step for a zoning amendment?
Mm-hmm, and we.
Cause I, you know, I come to these meetings, I mean, here's the opportunity for the public to, you know, express their opinion on yay, nay, maybe so on, on this. Uh, dark skies ordinance, so I mean, here we are.
And, and you've been to enough of these meetings that you know that.
Yeah, but.
If, 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 if it's, if it's one of the, the hot buttons in this township, will fill the room, but.
Well, my que- the question is, has a draft of this ordinance been like on the website? Cause I, cause I don't, I'm kinda, I'm kinda like, well, man, I haven't seen this.
We haven't decided to do it, we have.
That's what we're doing right now, is making that decision. Is, is that something we wanna move forward?
And then like put it, have the attorney review it, and if it's okay, makes sense, then put it on the web so.
Put it, put it on the website.
And have a public hearing on it.
And we might not do the public hearing until, um, September. To, just to give, just to give the attorney enough time to review it and to get it on the website. And then still, after our public hearing, we're gonna make a recommendation to the township board to adopt. Ordinance number such and such, uh, the dark sky ordinance.
So by, hopefully by that point, enough people will know about it, and if they don't like it, the board will, will hear about it. That's fair.
But we're not actually trying to call it dark sky.
No, we'll, we'll find.
It's a good show.
You're showing your age.
But it'd be all darkness.
Yeah, but there's different ways people can ask for an ordinance amendment. Maybe so the, the township board can initiate, the planning commission can initiate, or. Uh, a resident can fill out an application, pay the review fee. Uh, and then the planning commission and the township board are then obligated to act on it. It may not get approved. But that may, a resident or business owner can get it before the planning commission and the township board. Right, and you really, then there's no way for like the planning commission to say, no, we're not gonna do it, and, and you just, you have, then it has to go through the process.
Uh, uh, a developer perhaps could come to us and say. I wanna, I wanna build a small development and, um, and I only wanna put up, um. Uh, my building, I've got this piece of property. And for, for this to be economically feasible for me, I need to build on, on, uh, six thousand square foot lots. And our, uh, ordinance calls for fifteen thousand. Uh, and maybe, you know, that's a situation where, you know, he's building affordable housing on smaller lots and, and he wants us to look at that. But we have to take into account that if we, if we change, uh, the yellow area there. Maybe his development is in the yellow area there, and we change it to allow six thousand square foot lots. That now applies to the entire yellow area.
Right.
It's not just his piece of property, so.
Or like there's an action item in the master plan to develop, go, to go through with plan development to cluster. So which would allow the smaller ones, so someone could come in with a overall plan development, even if it's in that yellow area, where it only applies just to that area.
Plan unit.
Plan unit.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So. Um, it's a process, and it's, um, it's not quick, so, um. With that, I don't know if we have any other business, so do we have any further public comment?
That are just not quite. Shouldn't have been jumped on.
Is there anybody, nobody on? Comments from commissioners? Again, welcome, Ted, and. Give yourself a little time and this will all, it's gonna make sense. Uh, because I, I don't know that. Um, I mean, I did this before, so I have some idea of what we're going on. Kirst used to do it for a living. But, uh, I think most of, are just citizens who are interested in, in the orderly development of our community. I mean, like Kevin. And that's, that's a good start.
I mean, I used to do training programs for our planning commissioners. That I still have, you know, there's one on roles and responsibilities, there's one on site plan review, there's one on capital improvement program. There's one on stormwater management, you know.
The better.
Got some on.
Well, with no other business for us, we are adjourned at twelve after eight. Let's.
I was just gonna ask you for that.
Ted.
Chris, what did you say that, um, everything you've been working on is supposed to be on the bill, that's.
E R E, wait, E R E.
You sent me.
Did you say stuff?
That's even.